Hello, good evening to everyone. I am officially calling this meeting to order this evening. Would everyone please rise and say the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alrighty, thank you so much, and everybody, welcome. I would like to take this opportunity to welcome our new faces here at the dais. This is Dr. Deborah Del Sim. We also have with us down here, Dr. Emily Miller. So wonderful to have you. Am I missing anybody else? Oh my goodness, I'm so sorry. Welcome. We are thrilled to have you with us tonight, and gonna have a great meeting. Ready to go. I also want to make a comment to everyone that Jackie Clark is not here physically, but she is here in spirit and in voice and is listening and participating in our meeting this evening. You will not see her, but you may very well hear her. So can we do a little test? Hi Jackie.
Hello, Phyllis and all assembled.
Alright, very good. We have Jackie with us. Excellent. Okay, I need an adoption of the agenda. Do I have a fellow board member that would like to do that this evening?
Madam President, I move we adopt the agenda as presented.
Very good. I have Bob that has made the motion. Julie, a second. Do I have any discussion? Alrighty, all members who are voting for, say aye please.
Aye.
All those opposed? Nay? Alright, very good. Our adoption, agenda has been adopted. At this time, we are going to go into our superintendent's report, and this is where I turn it over to Dr. Carpenter.
Yes ma'am, madam president, board members. By the time we are in this room meeting again, we will have had the first day of the 18-19 school year. If you'll notice, the first day of school is rapidly descending upon us, August 15th. And there are also other events that are cogent and relevant to the first day of school. For your perusal there, if you would like to find yourself in any of those spaces and seeing our families coming out and getting geared up for the first days of school, those nights, whether they be ninth grade transition, seventh grade transition, back to school nights, et cetera, are there for you. Online enrollment to date or as of, it opened on Friday, July 13th, and as of today, we have 8,600 students who have participated in the process. High school students took their annual trip to Yellowstone. You'll note there that they really had a great, great experience, and that's something that's been in place around the greater Yellowstone ecosystem since 1967. And I had a chance during the school term to talk with a couple of teachers from Lee Summit High School who head up that event, and they were very excited, and I was excited to see their pictures as posted on social media. Another point I want to bring to your attention is in item number five. The Lee Summit North High School Boys Basketball Team and the work they did at Hope House, which is a local shelter for adults and children affected by domestic abuse. And you'll notice there that the seniors put the finishing touches on a basketball court for those families who are there in that facility. So if you happen to know any students affiliated with the North High School program in terms of basketball, please give them a shout out in terms of that level of community, community service. Positive feedback from our families relative to best and cost reductions. If you'll remember, we reported, we just want to report a parent's story regarding reservations and signing her children up for before and after school care. And as her daughter was getting old enough to possibly act as the caregiver during such times, when the reduction in fees went to $5.50 per year, this parent decided to use the before and after school services because of the fee reduction. To be exact, kids' country full-time before and after school fees have been reduced by $558 for the upcoming year. So that's anecdotal, but it speaks to the work that we've done around making our programs more accessible to, to our families. So give yourselves some applause when you find the time relative to our parents telling us that type of, of story. One other piece that I want to share is I had the opportunity to attend the EAB District Leadership Session last week, and if you recall, EAB was an item that you all approved for us that would be an extension of the research arm of the executives and building leaders of the district. And I'm pleased to have this national resource at our fingertips. It's something that's very, very useful, and I think myself and Kelly Waichel really found that we're going to maximize this opportunity in terms of their work and their efforts and how they might assist us in reaching our goals. So that's a part of our report. Feel free to read it in its detail, and that's all I have at this point, Madam President.
Very nice, Dr. Carpenter. Excellent report. Thank you so much. We are going to, I don't believe we have any presentations or recognitions this evening, and then this is the portion where we go into our board meetings that we take comments from the public, and I will defer down to Ms. Linda Usmert. Do we have any comments this evening, Linda?
We do not have any.
Okay, very nice. Then we're going to move on to our board reports or meetings attended. Each month, our board members attend various committees here in the district. They are assigned to be the board liaisons to listen and report back to us the great stuff that is happening in our district. So at this time, we are going to do, take our report from Ms. Kim Fritchie.
Thank you. I'm reporting from the Lee Summit Educational Foundation. The Friends of Foundation Community Campaign and the R7 Annual Drive to our staff kicked off this month. This fundraising program was introduced to district administrators just this morning, and I'm pleased to share that the Friends of Foundation brochure, I'm sharing that with you this evening, and invite your participation in that. Friends of the Foundation sponsorship is the foundation's primary fundraising outreach. You'll hear more about this from Cheryl in the next month, and we hope for 100% board participation again this year like we had last year. Thanks to all of you who got out and attended the Pearl Tavern Grand Opening for the benefit for the foundation, they selected LSCF. Generous donations of $1,476 kicked off the foundation's annual campaign that night, and Pearl Tavern's food, it was delicious, I think you might all agree with that. Food and drinks were provided, and we really appreciate those community partners for that. One more little item of note with LSCF is that our director, executive director Cheryl Frankie did make a presentation to the Noon Rotary Club meeting last week on Thursday, I believe Dennis Smith was there. And Cheryl and her assistant Jordan did a great job. They called up three LSCF board members to help explain our peak grants, scholarships, and all other aspects of our foundation. It was just a really great job, good report. So that's my report for this evening. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you so much, Kim. I'm gonna go here to Mr. Bob White.
The Finance Committee met on Wednesday, and we'll be reading a report from the Finance Committee here a little bit later.
Thank you so much. I'm going to skip here and go down to Ms. Julie Doan.
Alright, Lee Summit Cares takes a little hiatus for the summer, and so do my other teams, but I, I'm really excited about Team Lee Summit getting jump-starting in September. I will miss that meeting because I have a conference every year with my work, but, and I know Deborah will be there, and then CAC, I know Kelly will be there, and these are two teams that colla, I mean, if you want to see Lee Summit collaborate at its highest, those are the two teams. So I really hope that some of you newer people that are new to the district, just join us and listen to these two teams, maybe not Team Lee Summit, but CAC is in the evening, but I'm just really excited because those two are very collaborative, and that's what this district is all about. So anyway, we'll see you guys there. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you so much, Julie. Mr. Dennis Smith?
Yes, thank you. Speaking of the Citizens Advisory Committee, we will have our Steering Committee on Monday afternoon to prepare for the first meetings. And Kelly, I'm not sure, probably October, we'll discuss those, when the actual first meeting is, but I think traditionally it's October sometime, but, but the Steering Committee we get together, and again, it's, it's a very, very, very important committee. As Bob indicated, and we'll have a report here in a minute, Finance Committee met yesterday. And just a kind of update, there are some tax increment financing, or TIF, discussions going on in this community at this time. There were some presentation, or a presentation, maybe multiple presentations at a city council meeting on last, last Thursday evening. Again, just presentations. The way that works is, bottom line is, at some point in time down the road here, we'll probably, the TIF Commission will probably be having some meetings in which Jackie and I are set on that, on that commission, to see how those will impact our, our school district, if at all. So that's my report. I have that.
Very good, Dennis. Your experience is so welcome, and appreciate your continued commitment to CAC. Thank you for that. Uh huh. Jackie Clark, at this time, I will ask if you would like to make a report?
Yes, thank you. In, in the past month, I've been engaged in the responsibility area of the TIF mission responsibility, the appointment, and was able to attend the Thursday night council meeting and hear an initial presentation, and it appears that a potential developer on a project will be coming back to the council with a proposal of sorts, and we'll be monitoring that as Dennis referenced. Additionally, on Friday, I was invited to meet with Mayor Baird and had a very good dialogue with him and in his interest in working with the various leadership entities in the community. So we greatly appreciate the ongoing dialogue with the mayor and various members of the council that we've been able to engage with in, in, in recent weeks. And then, of course, we want to remind people that there is a primary election on the 7th of August, and that absentee balloting is going to be underway this month, and we would encourage folks to be mindful of the various races that will be on the ballot, and you can find information with the Jackson County Election Board online. You'll Google that up. And I just might want to add, in this case, I was pleased to be able to be around the Stansberry Leadership Center on July 2nd to welcome aboard some of the folks that were already greeted earlier in this meeting, and just give you my hearty welcome, although I'm not able for health reasons to be there with you tonight. I, I think we've got a great team that's eager to get to work. That's all I have.
Okay, very good, Jackie. Thank you for sharing that with us. I just want to add quickly that in my role, excuse me, yes. Oh gosh, Ryan. I was saving our newbie for last. So I'm going to just halt and rewind, and Ryan Murdock, please speak, sorry.
That's okay. I don't, I don't have much to, to report outside of, we did resurrect the Lee Summit Assistance Corporation on June 27th, so, that's right, that's right. It now becomes the second shortest committee meeting of all time, but I will get the pleasure now of serving on that committee, which apparently we do need because we still have an asset with the Lee Summit Assistance Corporation. So that's my report. So thanks.
Again, my apologies for leaving you out down there. I knew you were there, I just didn't call your name. Just quickly want to say that in, in my role, I've had the opportunity to be at several events with our staff, and today's district leadership conference was wonderful. I was proud of our entire board that was present, and had the opportunity to speak with many of our new hires in the district as well as our current employees. I'm just so proud, I really am, and so that's kind of where my focus has been. I continue to dialogue with individual board members, checking on them, making sure they're doing okay, making sure there's, there's things that I can do if I need to help, because I want this experience, sitting at this dais, the very most positive experience that, that we can have. So anyway, with that said, I'm gonna go right into items for decision, and I'm not sure who's gonna handle this tonight, okay? My gentleman to the left here, oh, we're going down that way, okay. Dennis Smith is our finance person for this evening.
Last month, Bob thought he could do his in five seconds. I can't do that in the, in this time, so I will be bringing the Finance Committee speak, appoint to you tonight. Our investments through May may total, or through May, totally, total approximately $113 million, .4 million. On the revenue and expense report, operating revenues are slightly higher than prior year due to additional local and state receipts. Expense percentages are within expected budget parameters. The unaudited fund balance is at 34%. Purchase, other finance issues, we discussed the purchasing card. Last month, the Board of Education approved Central Bank of the Midwest as the district's purchasing card provider. This month, the contract is available for the board to review. October 1st, the new cards will go live. The present cards will be working until September 30th. Communication, we sent out the staff in regards to timelines. Under, on, as far as facilities, Woodland Sewer, R7 staff met with city, and city engineers last month for a preliminary schedule was given, and the district plans to have recommendations of contract awarded to the board in early spring, possibly as soon as February. As we know, that's been a long, ongoing process, but I think we're getting there. Construction and maintenance update, updates were provided for the projects in progress and completed over the summer. A facilities use fee schedule, which you saw, the district is required by policy to review the facility fee schedule each year. There is no policy revisions for this year. It was mentioned that for the next school year, that the district had baseball and softball rentals for the summer months to fee schedule. The only change to the schedule for this year is to add tennis courts onto the schedule. Other finance issues, DLR, Gould Evans and Link, the board approved DLR Gould Evans to provide comprehensive master planning consulting contingent on mutual acceptable negotiated fees and contract. The revised proposal is in line with the research Dr. Hedrick conducted prior to seeking the RFQ. The DL Group, Gould Evans and Link have completed preliminary work on board priority number two and are developing an aggressive timeline to complete CFMP work for the 2018-2019 school year. Applied Economics, Rick Brammer is scheduled to work in the district in late August. There are 142 project hours to complete the demographic update with a labor cost of $11,740. Additional costs include $1,350 for associated travel in August and $750 for residential absorption data purchased through Landmark, Landmarking, Inc. of Olathe. The total proposed estimate is $13,840. Meal prices, following analysis of the, the price increase needed to comply with the federal paid lunch equity formula to, to cover increasing salary benefit and food costs, staff is recommending a five to 10 cent meal increase for students. With, with the increase, the district meal prices remain competitive with neighboring KC metro area schools. Madam President, I will have two motions to, to present.
Okay.
I, I would move 6.02 to approve the transfer of $10,339,302.42 from the general fund to the special revenue fund.
Second?
Alright, we have a motion made by Dennis Smith, a second by Bob White. All in favor, say aye please.
Discussion.
Oh, sorry, we do need a discussion, my apologies. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor, see, please signify by saying aye. Yes?
Aye.
Yes. Thank you, Jackie, heard that one. And all those opposed, same sign, no? Alrighty, very good. Motion carried.
I have one more. 6.03 to approve the treasurer's report and payment of bills.
Second?
Okay, motion and a second. Any discussion? Alrighty, we will take a vote. All those in favor signify by saying yes.
Aye.
And all those opposed? Alrighty, motion carries. Very, very nice. Thank you, Dennis and Bob, for the work that you do on our Finance Committee. At this time, we will move into item number seven. These are items for decision. These are, we have a lot of these this month. These are items that we lump into one group, everyone takes a look at them. If there's any that are of concern, they can be pulled out, which we did not have. So at this time, after looking through, I think we have item 7.01, all the way over to 7.07, I would like to entertain a motion here.
I would move that we approve items for decision on the consent agenda, 7.01 through 7.07.
Alrighty, I have a motion?
Second.
Very good. Ms. Kim Fritchie's made a motion, and Dennis has seconded. Is there any discussion surrounding any of these items? Yes, okay, I'm getting a signal down here from Julie Doan.
I just, I, we're not talking about any of these individually, but I just don't want to overlook the JHDF, the Policy for Suicide Awareness and Prevention. I mean, everyone knows that this is top of mind, and I just wanted that to be said out, that that's one of the policies, so.
Yes, thank you so much, Julie, for bringing that to our attention. And Ms. Kim Fritchie?
Yes, and I would agree with Julie. I had a couple of notes on that. I, I believe that this is a very important policy that, and I don't know if our public knows, but this is a recommendation by the Missouri School Board Association, a policy that was drafted by them based on the needs all over the state of Missouri, not only in Lee Summit, but I applaud us for, for going ahead and, and voting on this new policy. I think our parents and patrons might be very interested in hearing more about that new policy and its implications for our school staff and especially our students, if we have a few more details we'd like to share on that.
Alright, very good. Yes, Dr. Collier?
Certainly, we have spent extensive time through Dr. Hill's office preparing our staff for implementation of that particular policy and providing them additional training that they will experience here at the beginning of the school year relative to suicide prevention awareness. And so, again, just trying to equip staff with additional tools is going to be very beneficial to, to them. And Dr. Hill, if there's anything you'd like to add, but in a nutshell, we've had teams working with Dr. Hill since the spring, preparing for that, and they have created a wide variety of resources for use with our staff that we will also make available to our parents, and that parents can also access on our district website as well. Thank you for that summary, you did really well, but I'll entertain any other questions you might have.
Alright, Mr. Bob White?
I just wanted to let our public know that the policy is available on our board docs that you have access to. If you want to look at the specific wording of the policy, you, please feel free to log on to board docs, and it's there for your perusal.
I would also add that we are required to also place resources on the district website, so along with the board policy will be samples of resources that families, students, or anyone can access in this community, and they are widespread, not only just Lee Summit, but also Kansas City in general.
Thank you so much, and Kim and Julie, thanks for bringing that forward. I just want to throw in a personal note. I did lose a family member two weeks ago to suicide, a 26-year-old young man who did take his life, and this is, I believe, a near and dear issue for all of us, and so thanks for sharing where our viewers can find more information on that. So, thank you, Dr. Hill. Is there any other discuss, yes, Dennis Smith?
And I don't know how we could, you might be able to not do this in, in a short time period, but maybe for our Citizens Advisory Committee, put together, instead of maybe the whole policy, but just some bullet points that, that we could present to the Steering Committee, to see if they, if that's a item for something we need to discuss at some point in time at Citizens Advisory. Again, doesn't have to be elaborate at all, but just some way that spread that word to, that we could get that word out to, to those 60 people that sit on that committee at some point in time.
Sure, happy to do so. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes. Alrighty, very good. Is there any other discussion? Okay, with that said, we will now take a vote. All in favor, please signify by saying yes.
Aye.
All, oh, oh Julie, I heard Jackie, okay? And all those no, please say no. Alright, very good. We are going to move into items for decision. These are consent, we're gonna ratify over contracts over 5,000. We do have one, I believe, on this, it's item 8.01, and, let's see, no, we do not have any, okay? So we're gonna move on to items for decision. We're gonna approve new contracts over 5,000. We have a very lengthy list this evening, everything from approving ACT agreements, frontline education contracts, just all the way through. So who would like to make a motion on this?
Madam President?
Go ahead, Jackie.
Sorry, I thought I was ready to go. I moved that the board approved new contracts over $5,000 as presented in consent agenda items 9.02 to 9.32.
Okay, we have a motion. Do I have a second? Okay, Bob, we have a motion made by Jackie, and a second by Mr. Bob White. Do we have any discussion on any of these items that are brought forth to us this evening? Yes, Ms. Julie?
We got some numbers with the CAS Career Center, and those numbers are down, and I was just kind of hoping that maybe it was because we have our nursing here in-house, and, or is there, does anybody have a, a thought to that? Picking on Sharp again. I always pick on that dude.
The numbers relatively, the last three or four years have been relatively the same. If you're talking nursing specifically at Summit Tech, you're having 80, you have 88 slots there, and then we have another nursing at Herndon. I'm not for sure.
I thought, I thought I saw CAS was...
Well, CAS doesn't offer that.
Oh, okay.
Herndon numbers, are you looking at the Herndon numbers?
I thought CAS Career Center was down, and I just kind of wanted to know, and I was kind of thinking that they had a nursing. Comments?
Yes, Bob wants to speak here.
Only because I'm a little familiar with that, but my information's slightly out of date. But CAS Career Center is quite a long haul from Lee Summit to get down there, and that sometimes, at least in the past, was a detrimental factor to some kids choosing to go down there because it is a long ways. And in the past, they had offered more agricultural-based programs and fire and safety, which I don't think is offered at Herndon, so that was the, it used to be, at least, it used to be the bulk of our enrollments was there.
They, they do offer nursing at, at CAS. However, we, we suffice that through STA, Herndon, and then most of our students go fire science, ag or EMT to CAS. So that's where, that's where most of our, the bulk of our students enroll out there.
Okay, my computer was getting an update, so that's why we, but anyway, it was, I mean, we've lost, like, it was 25 students, and then 19, and then 18, so I just, that's what I was kind of talking about.
Yes ma'am, and it fluctuates because now that there's multiple, like I said, there's multiple pathways, multiple opportunities, and we do have a CNA option at Summit Tech that we're trying to renew and work through Preferred Futures. They, their contract is up because of the gal, so we're in negotiations there to try to renew that and some other things there.
Okay, good, thank you.
Are there any further questions, discussion? Yes, or Mr. Murdock?
I have a couple of questions regarding 9.15 of our SROs coming to our buildings with dare officers in middle and high school. And I apologize for asking this question, I know we got our, our board, our board packet answers this afternoon, and I know all of you have been really busy, so. One of the things that I'd asked about was the dare officers and how many times they're in our elementary school buildings and stuff like that, and I'm curious also, do we have like the statistics of, and you don't have to have them right now, obviously, but I don't want to, that, that would be terrible, this, yes, give me the exact number, of the success rate that our dare program is having with our kids within our elementary and middle schools relative to reducing those, because I haven't, I didn't see that in, in this. And then second to that is, are the dare officers that are gonna be there this year, are they the same dare officers in the elementary schools that were there last year? Like, are the kids seeing the exact same officers? Like, are the kids seeing the exact same officers each year since they're most likely, hopefully, building a relationship with them?
Okay, if I forget one of your questions?
I'd be happy to repeat it, it'll be okay.
Thank you, so every, we have four DARE officers, and they are divided amongst all of the elementary schools and the middle schools, and so the same DARE officer will see the same students and take four or five elementaries, and they will rotate between first semester or second semester. So they'll stick with Prairie View for first semester and make sure they see all students in that first semester, and then they'll switch to their other schools second semester. And they do that, all four of them do that throughout the entire district, so.
Can I stop you right there?
You bet.
I'm sorry, does that mean though, like, that the ones who were at Prairie View last year are now at Prairie View again this year?
We have, so to continue on with that, it's okay, no problem, no problem. We do have one new DARE officer, one of our DARE officers from last year was hired as an SRO, so we have one new DARE officer and three other remaining. So the schools are still being divided up based upon the officer's strengths. The three middle schools, obviously, some are, have more experience with upper level and middle school, so they are working that out and we should get that scheduled fairly soon. So yes, your school, your students could potentially have the same officer all semester long. As far as datas you were asking about, we do not have anything readily that we keep other than looking at discipline data, and we can summarize that for you and get that to you later if you'd like to show a correlation, if you will.
Yeah, that would be good, yeah.
Okay, was there another one?
No, no, you got it, and I didn't mean to put you on the spot, I appreciate it, so.
Any others?
Any other questions?
Billis?
Yes, Jackie?
I just want to make a couple of notes, just like some of the others have, because it is such a lengthy list of contracts and that the folks that are viewing the meeting will want to have an understanding that we actually do look at these items. On 9.19, I just want to remind the audience that that particular contract does meet the criteria that we have under our board policy, G, B, E, B, C, which is relating to criminal background checks, and this is a physical therapy contract, so we want to make sure that that was, that particular criteria is met, and as the vendor was vetted in the process, it was one of the very first questions that our staff inquired about, so I want to make sure people know that. And then on item 9.27, the applied economics contract, there were questions raised, this has been a long-term relationship, but it has been since, it looks like 2002, that we bid that contract, and I want to congratulate the finance committee for talking yesterday about going out for bid for 2019 enrollment study. So I think it's important that we take a look at our vendors and make sure, you know, this has been a 16-year relationship, I'm not saying anything adverse about it, but I think we need to take a look at those kinds of periods of time and make sure that we're getting the best value for what our needs are for our taxpayers and all of our stakeholders. That's all I have, thank you.
Okay, very good, thank you Jackie. Is there any further discussion? Alrighty, I believe I have a motion and I have a second. We will now vote, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Alright, very good.
Yes, I did, thank you.
Okay. Great, yeah, Dennis over there heard, okay. Alright, we will move into item number 10, these are items for decision. Now each and every one of these, I believe we have seven here tonight, each of these do need to be voted on individually. So the first one is item 10.01, that is to approve the board priorities for 2018-19. And Dr. Carpenter, I'll turn this over to you.
Madam President, board members, you all worked diligently a few weeks ago in terms of reflecting on this year's priorities and building out those priorities for the upcoming school year. The recommendation here this evening is to approve that work, but I do want to spend a little time expressing these priorities to our community. On first blush, they look eerily similar to last year's priorities, but they are clearly, clearly more in depth and different. So in priority one, last year we talked about equitable access to high-quality instruction, but we really spent last year building out the foundation of what that should look like for our young people. And per last year's work, we've kind of centered ourselves on three things that we believe increased student achievement for every child must focus on, and we appreciate your work in helping to identify those areas. But it must be steep in innovative practices, per priority one. It must have a clear focus on student well-being, and there must be equity in program design and implementation. So we've talked a little bit with you during last month's work session about what that exactly looks like and how that might be reflected in the things we see in our learning environments going forward. Has to do with how we teach, what we teach, and how we assess, and are there some common elements of that that are used across the district? Very important priority. Priority number two, last year we talked about comprehensive facility master planning and equitable access to high-quality 21st century learning environments. And we did a lot of internal studying of what that might look like, starting to look at capacity numbers, starting to really look at how this interfaces with priority one and the work that went into our instructional compass. And in priority two, what you'll find here is we've changed that language, per some of the work you've done, to future-ready learning environments. Number one, how do we prepare our kids for a future that does not even exist? I heard today, I think our kindergarten is coming in, will be the class of 2033. And some of the projections we hear about jobs of the future tell us that the jobs of 2033, in many cases, have not been created. But we do know that there are some skills that kids might need to be able to be key players in the work and development of said jobs. They need to be creative, they need to be collaborative, they need to be good communicators, and we can work toward that in terms of our work. But the key in priority two is that we're going to begin looking at aligning our fiscal resources with this comprehensive plan that we're developing over the course of the first semester of this school term. And that could include adjusting school boundaries to meet the instructional programming and facility needs of all students pre-K through 12 in our district. And that pre-K works intentional, as we think about great beginnings and the fact that we're maxed out there, we have several, I don't know, eight or nine satellite classrooms in our district, and how that impacts the work we do, and we still have a waiting list for families that have some of our most vulnerable learners that need to be engaged in the school environment. So that's going to require some very intense work, and I think we are all prepared and geared up to do said work. Last year, as it related to priority three, we focused on trust, and we felt like we were at a point in our district's history where we really needed to focus on the issue of trust as it relates to our collaboration and communication. I think we worked through that, and I think we did a good job of building some good will in that area, but the work's not done. So we want to elevate said communications by continuing to foster confidence in our school district through increased involvement opportunities, there'll be lots as we do the work of priority number two, right? And interconnected public relations and engagement, so how do we connect more genuinely with our families and our greater community? Those are the priorities you have worked through, and the administration recommends adoption of said priorities for 2018-19.
Very nice, thank you so much, Dr. Carpenter, for that thorough explanation. At this time, I believe I would like to entertain a motion.
I recommend that we approve the board priorities as stated for 2018-19.
Very good, Mr. Murdock has made a motion, Julie has accepted, I would like to entertain discussion at this time. Anyone, discussion? Okay, I would like to just comment before we take a vote, that this has been such a collaborative effort by so many people. I remember the work session we sat in in June, and it was exciting, and it was invigorating to be a part of this process coming up with these priorities. I believe our team throughout the district did a great job of seeing these through, and now we're ready to move on to this year's board priorities. So with that said, I will take a vote, all those in favor of approving the board priorities for 2018-19, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And all those opposed? Thank you Jackie, and all those opposed, same sign. Alrighty, very good, we have approved the board priorities for 2018-19, thank you so much. Next, for our decisions, item 10.02, and again, I'm going right over here, Dr. Carpenter?
Dr. Miller.
Okay.
Excuse me, thank you. I'm actually going to turn this over to Jane Hensler.
Jane is here, I did see her earlier.
The first information is for the bakery bid, and three vendors were sent to bid, get info. Roma and Interstate Bakeries, and one vendor replied, which was our current vendor, Roma Bakery, so I'm recommending that we approve that bid for Roma for this year, school year.
Okay, very good. I would like to, at this time, take a motion for this item. Can I get a motion, please?
Alright. I would move that we approve the 2018-2019 bakery bid for Roma Bakery.
Excellent, thank you. Alright, I have a motion and a second at this time. Does anyone have any questions they would like to ask of Ms. Jane? Alrighty, he says he had a Roma sandwich yesterday and it was good, I heard, I had to share it. Any other, any comments? Jackie, anything there about Roma Bakery?
I have nothing to add.
Alright, thank you very much. Alright, we have a motion and a second on the floor. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed? And I believe that we have approved item 10.02, our bakery bid for 2018-2019. Good job, thank you so much, appreciate it.
And I think I have the next one.
Okay, yes, you have item 10.03, this is to approve the dairy bid for 2018-2019. Go Jane.
This year, we sent bids to Belfonte Bakery, Anderson, oh, bakery, sorry, dairy, Anderson Erickson and Highland, and two companies responded, Highland and Belfonte. We have done an analysis and recommend Belfonte Dairy for our dairy bid this year.
So at this time, I do need a motion?
Madam President, I move we accept the bid from Belfonte for the 2018-19 dairy bid.
Second.
Okay, very good, I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion at this time? So I'm curious, why do the others do not respond that you send bids out to?
Well, let's see, two out of the three responded. I don't know why Anderson Erickson didn't respond. That I do not know, because they have responded in the past, but this year they did not. I think sometimes, you know, one thing that we're having a challenge with this year is you've heard all about the delivery costs because of the truckers only have X amount of time to be on the road, and I've heard from vendors that they're having problems finding enough people to deliver, especially to, you know, when we have this many schools that they have to delivery, deliver to, it's costing us money, and we found that out with our produce vendor, that he decided not to bid on us this year.
Okay. Very good, alright, we have a motion and a second on the floor. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Alright, thank you very much, I did get Jackie's aye there too as well. Okay, Jane, I believe that you're on for about the next three, so we're going to move down to about, to item 10.03, no, sorry, 10.04, that's to approve the ice cream bid for 2018-2019.
Two companies were contacted for the ice cream bid, that was Belfonte Dairy and Kansas City Ice Cream Company, both responded, and after analysis by staff, we are recommending to award this bid to Belfonte Dairy.
Okay, very good. I would entertain a motion to approve ice cream bid for 2018-19. Yes, Ms. Jackie?
I moved that the board awards the 2018-2019 ice cream bid to Belfonte Dairy.
Second.
Alright, very good, I have a motion and a second over there, and is there any discussion? Ms. Kim Fritchie?
Yes, I just wanted to make a comment, in looking over each of these contracts that we have just been voting on, I found it very intriguing to look at the charts of the comparison of the prices of each of those companies for the individual items, you know, for the bread items, the difference between the cost of a hamburger bun at one company and another, it's just amazing and how those add up, the same with these ice cream bids, because ice cream is something that isn't a normal part of the regular school lunch, right? Those are, those are add-ons, those are extras that the kids can buy, and it just, it amazes me the difference in price that you can get in those items.
And what's interesting, Kim, is the regulations that are, you know, stipulated now on ice cream, that it has to meet the Eat Smart Guidelines, which that's why we don't see as many ice cream companies bid, because it's just too, it's not cost-effective for them.
Very good, any other discussion?
Yeah, I hope.
Yes, Ryan?
I just have, I just have a quick question, between the two companies, if Kansas City Ice Cream Company had been a little bit lower, would we go with them since Belfonte outsources a lot of their things outside the Kansas City area, do you think? I don't know, I'm just-
We usually, it's on price.
Okay.
Based on price.
Okay, very good, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor of approving our ice cream bid for 2018-19, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, same sign. Alright.
And that was an a also.
Yes, thank you Jackie. Alright, very nice, we're going to move on to item 10.05, and this is also, Jane, this is to approve the meal prices for 2018-2019. So I will entertain a motion. Okay, alright, so I believe we do have some background information we will share here.
Yes, I think Dennis presented that.
Yes.
Yeah, I did.
From the finance committee, and the board approved that and a prior. The meal prices.
We still have to approve them.
Oh, you still.
That's just what we talked, we have to approve.
Oh, okay, okay. Basically, this is based on our meal price equity formula that we are required to do every year per federal guidelines, and so we've shown you the current prices that we had and the proposed prices. In doing this formula, we had to increase our meal prices from five to 10 cents overall, and it's a very calculated formula that we have to go through to do, and so you can see some of the areas that were increased were in breakfast, and we are going to look at doing, right now, the federal government does not require protein to be a- to be a part of our breakfast, but there are some schools that are asking for that and we also agree with that, but it was just, you know, something that we're not required to do. So we're going to be putting a few more protein items on the breakfast menu so kids have another option to choose on, basically, we're doing that in the secondary schools because we do a hot breakfast in, in the high schools, but in the bag of breakfast, bag of breakfast programs, we're gonna, those are where we're gonna add some protein items as a choice. So that, that was breakfast, that's why those prices have increased at the elementary school. And then at the elementary school also, we're increasing our lunch price by a nickel and it's just due again to this meal price equity formula as well as the cost of increased cost for the breakfast, or the, for the lunch items that we're providing to students. And then in the middle schools, a lot of confusion, parents are saying, how come the middle school menus are a lot like the high school menus, but our middle school kids, our high school kids have to pay more? So we're just kind of listening to parents and we're putting that more at the cost of the high school meal, menu. And then you can also see the premier meals for the elementary and middle schools will be the same because we're also providing the same items on those premier meals and then the high schools will be paying more because they have a little more, the entrees that the kids want are more expensive. And then last year, the middle school kids heard what the high school kids were having. So we do have a premier plus item in middle schools, which is the 285 and have been going over quite well. But we want to provide options so kids that maybe don't have enough money can keep our meal prices low for those, those items. And then the kids that want to pay more for chicken tenders and the more, some of the more expensive items, they, they can buy them, but they are at a little, little higher Any questions?
My only question is, do we still have the elementary macaroni and cheese this year?
No, we have it in all the, all the schools.
That can't go anywhere. The elementary kids just go crazy over the macaroni and cheese, so I just want to make certain that was still there.
Oh yeah.
And you know, a couple of years ago, when we had the, the regulation that had whole grains, we were told that we couldn't do the regular macaroni and then, and our participation, oh, it dropped by a third. And then we got a waiver from the government so we could do regular macaroni last, well, the year before and this year and the, it's gone back up. So it, you know, kids, kids know.
Yeah, absolutely.
I agree with them.
Big kids, little kids, we all know about our macaroni and cheese. I will go to a restaurant and order lobster and mac and cheese any day over a steak. So, Dennis?
Do we have a motion on the floor or do we need to have that?
We need a motion, yeah, we do, so...
I do have some questions.
Yes, so I would like for someone up here to please make a motion.
I, I would move that the board approve the proposed meal prices presented.
Very good. I have a motion and a second and now, board members, we may entertain an open discussion.
I, I just, along this whole line of prices for, for nutritionists that we're seeing tonight, first of all, the meal prices is listed and I, we're not the, the most expensive, we're not the cheapest, we're in the middle, if not a little bit below as far as that. And I think, and I remember, I think I asked you this question last year about this time, the way that we're able to do that sometimes is, and correct me if I'm wrong, as simple as the, your preparation with freezer space that we have. So, just real quickly, kind of, we got one new board member, but renew, how are we able to, to do that and still provide quality meals that other schools within our metropolitan area, I mean, some of those are 15, 20 cents or more higher than what we charge?
You're right. There's really two reasons. One is, you know, we are the lowest free and reduced participation school in the region. So you can see how many in that chart are, how our free and reduced compares to. So we get very little federal funds from the government. We also are, Missouri's a commodity state where we actually get commodity foods versus Kansas is a cash in lieu of commodity state. And I still think that we, Kansas will say they have a better deal because they get cash, but we get, I think we get a better deal by doing commodities and then processing some of our items. We can keep our prices lower because the federal commodity program helps us process product like Big Daddy pizzas and things that the kids like that actually lowers the price of, the market price of, from a vendor. And then the third price, reason like you were saying Dennis, is our central freezer. And we did that probably 10 years ago.
I really, I mean, that was just...
Yeah.
I know it wasn't, to me, that was this, gosh, I can't believe that little simple thing, which wasn't, I'm sure, a little simple, but...
Well, if you think about it, the protein items are the most expensive items that we have on the menu and those are the things that are coming into that central freezer. And so, you know, and, and again, I mean, it'll probably really impact some school districts this year because of the delivery costs to all these schools that they have to drop at versus, you know, we get, most of the vendors bring in a big semi once a week and load off by the pallet, we try to keep everything by pallet, so it, that driver is not at our dock very long. And again, the vendors factor that in and so it's a one drop and it's a quick shop to drop and we can get on their way. So it, it really, we really do save a lot of money by having a central freezer.
And one other, and thank you so much, but one other question along those same lines, we had in our board work session this evening, I don't know if you were present for that or not, but we're having the same, basically, driver situation, delivery situation in our transportation. And I know you belong to local, state, federal groups. What's the discussion out there? It's probably not going to get any better. So, so how are those, and you can't predict 2031, but how, how we continue to go about feeding our kids, which is very important for them to get their, their education? What's, what's the discussion in your industry about how we're going to, how you're going to address the, addressing those issues? And I don't mean to hit you cold, but I'm sure you've had those discussions because it has an effect.
Yeah, I was just at a national conference and they were talking about that, especially like with produce, because a lot of that produce comes from either coast. And, you know, coming in centrally, it's costing those drivers and those companies, they have to stop after, you know, X amount of time. And so there, I think we will definitely see some increases in, in our fresh fruits and vegetables. We didn't see that much this year because I've already compared it to last year's costs, but I think companies now are struggling and they're, you know, everyone's saying, you know, they need more drivers. And you see that on local news or national news that there's, there's definitely already a driver shortage, but this compounds the problem by having to log and wait, only, you know, be able to be on the road X amount of time. A lot of companies I know, like the big major ones, they backhaul, you know, so they, they might be going out and getting something, taking out something and then they're bringing back something. So that's kind of like a Cisco or Cole, you know, the big distributors. And, but yeah, I think we're definitely going to be seeing higher costs.
Madam President, I think we just got to keep this in mind. We, we just approved three priorities a moment ago.
Yes.
And we have the lowest free and reduce at 19%, but that's still 19% of our kids are needing help. And, and I would even go out as far to say, as many of our kids in our district whose parents have three, four kids in their family, just to feed them at school every day is, is important and I think it goes back to equity again and I, kudos to our nutrition people who, if kids aren't well fed, they're, and fed right, they're, those teachers have a Dickens of a time in a classroom each and every day to provide the kind of education they need to have. So, sorry about the soapbox.
No, Dennis, I think you bring up some outstanding points and again, we're all up here nodding our heads tonight because we've had the discussion prior to, to our regular board meeting about the shortage of bus drivers, truck drivers. It's a, it's not just a local issue or regional, it's a national issue and it's definitely something that we wish to keep our eyes on and realize that it could definitely affect our bottom line when it comes to food and feeding our children because like you said, a child that's hungry has a real hard time focusing when their stomach's growling. So do I have any other discussion here? Great, great discussion, thank you so much. Alrighty, I have, believe I have a motion and a second. Let's go on ahead and take a vote on this. All in favor of approving the meal prices for 2018-19, please signify by saying aye.
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 And all those, thank you Jackie and all those opposed? Same sign? Alright, very nice. Just want to tell you how much we appreciate your work that you do, Jane. I have to tell you, just a personal note, when I was, my very first board day, I spent it with you in Nutrition Services and I will never forget that moment. You, the success that you have in your program with your staff is a direct reflection of you taking the time and caring and thank you so much for everything that you and your whole entire department do, thank you.
You all tell the staff because they're a team.
Yes, absolutely. It's, it's very evident and thank you for what you do with them, so. I do not believe we have any items for presentations this, oh gosh, I'm sorry, whoops. Okay, gosh, I thought I was doing good there too. Okay, I do have two more. I have item 10.06 that I'm going to be needing a motion and a second on. This is to approve the 2018-19 curriculum revisions and Dr. Carpenter?
At this point, I would turn it over to Dr. Collier and she may be getting some support from Dr. Flack. Dr. Collier.
Dr. Flack is certainly available to answer any questions that you might have relative to the curriculum revisions presented to you this evening. There, that's quite an extensive list that you have there, but certainly he's available and certainly I'm willing to answer any questions that you might have. So, Dr. Flack?
It's only 127 pages, so...
Right, right.
But I appreciate Dr. Flack and his team and their work throughout this process as well. Thank you, sir.
Okay, so at this time, I would like to call for a motion.
Madam President, I recommend that the board approve the attached curriculum, the new, attached new curriculum and curriculum revisions.
Very good. I have a motion and a second and now I'm going to open this up for discussion. So do we have any discussion? Okay, Ms. Fritchie?
I was just curious, just for the sake of the public out there, this is an extensive list of curriculum that's been revised and last year you informed us that we're on a cycle, that, that certain curriculum is done, worked on each year. Can you estimate how many hours are spent or do you know for sure how many hours are spent working on curriculum each summer by our staff members?
That, that's a great question. It would be hard to pinpoint the, the exact number of hours. We can get that for you, but I can tell you that one curriculum area usually takes about eight days during the school year to work on that. And so if you extrapolate that, depending on the number of people who work on that team, I can tell you that each team is led by either a department chair or curriculum specialist and then they have multiple numbers of teachers who work on those curriculum teams. And we try to get representation from each of the feeder school groups to serve on those teams. So I'd really have to go through and look at how many people served on the, it, it varies from year to year. The budget for curriculum work throughout the year, last year was around $200,000, so if you look at that. And it's either work done during the school day or outside of, of the school day, so it, so it varies.
So that continues throughout the school year at different times?
It does and we do work throughout the summer as well. So this summer, we've had another group of teachers working to put curriculum resources into Schoology and that's been another large endeavor, so.
And having written curriculum many times in the past, that is not an easy job and it's good to collaborate with all of your colleagues to do that. So thank you very much to your whole, all the teachers out there who revise and...
Thank you, Kim. Any other discussion? Mine's a comment. The other day I was in the hallway and there were numerous staff members in the hallway and I ran into one who could, who had to come over and tell me, I'm, I'm here to write curriculum. And the enthusiasm, it was really cool to see that because sometimes you think of it as tedious work, which it is, very tedious and very, very challenging to get it, all those pieces together, but it was enthusiastic. I could hear it and I could feel it and he was very excited about writing curriculum.
I appreciate you saying that. The teachers really have a lot of ownership in this curriculum.
Yes, it's...
They feel passionate about.
Well, the, this group of teachers were very passionate about it and I just thought that was wonderful. Thank you, Dr. Flack. Are there any other questions, comments, discussion? Dennis? Oh, okay, Jackie, how you doing there?
Doing great.
Okay, very good. Alright, so at this time, we do have a motion and a second. I would entertain, now we will vote, take a vote on this. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Very, very good. Excellent. Thank you, Dr. Flack, thank you, Dr. Collier and all those involved. Next up, we have our item 10.07, that's personnel report.
08, Dr. Del Sim.
Sorry. It sure is. Good evening. First, if I could just mention, thank you for the warm welcome to R7. Everyone has been delightful as well as the outstanding two days with our district leadership as you mentioned, Madam President, led by Dr. Carpenter. It's just been tremendous. I'm so glad to be part of R7, so thank you. Before you is the personnel report, Madam President and Board, for your consideration and approval tonight. You will note that the green lined items are our newest additions. HR has been working with our friends in academic services and most importantly, are building principals to hire the highest quality staff to work with our kids as we get ready for the school year. Can I provide any further information?
At this time, I'd like to get a motion on the floor, if I could please.
Madam President, I approve that we, I, I move that we approve the personnel report as presented.
Second.
Very good. So we have a motion and a second and at this time, I would really like to open this up to discussions, comments regarding the personnel report that you have in front of you this evening. Mr. Murdock?
I have one just really quick question. Going into this school year, about how many people are we still trying to find positions for?
You know, that's a great question. I've been working with academic services, as I mentioned, as well. We have one teacher vacancy that we just adjusted and looked at numbers, a kindergarten position. So we want our kids to have best services. We've made an addition with Dr. Kephart. And then we have one speech language pathologist vacancy. We offered a position and was declined, so we're in pursuit of a second that we're working with Dr. Hill on. And the other than that, we're in good shape, other than some classified spots, so looking good, I think, moving ahead.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Dr. Del Sim, thank you for that nice remarks to the board, thank you.
Oh, you're welcome, thank you.
Appreciative of your new work here. We have a new teacher breakfast coming up that is sponsored... Um, we have a new Teacher Breakfast coming up that is sponsored by the Lee Summit Chamber of Commerce. And how many teachers approximately will we have new teachers to our district?
Well, I don't have a firm number yet. That, that's kind of in flux, but my understanding is, um, your turnover rate is less than my former district.
Okay.
Which is good. It, it's under ten percent for your turnover rate.
Very good. And how many teachers, new teachers to our district will we recognize at the breakfast?
Can I get back to you?
Oh, gosh, yes, absolutely.
Okay, absolutely.
Okay, yes, thank you.
I'll provide that in your update.
I look forward to that every single year, that New Teacher Breakfast, getting that new energy coming. I'm sorry, I miss, I had misunderstood you earlier.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Alright, is there any other discussion?
Have, have we got that notification? When is, I?
August sixth.
Have I?
Yes.
Have you all, have we been notified? Is that?
I believe it was in our board update.
Did I miss that in board update?
No?
It usually comes from the chamber.
Yeah, I got it. I think maybe it was sent to me from the chamber.
Seven thirty, the sixth, at the MIC.
Linda says it will be in tomorrow's update. I, I, I thought, well, maybe I missed that somewhere or something.
Okay. Very good. Thank you so much. Appreciate that report. Um, any further discussion? If not, we will all take a, a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Alright, very, very nice. Now I'm able to move to item thirteen, eleven, which there are no presentations tonight. Is that correct? If I see that right? And then we're going to move into item twelve, which is items of information. Um, these are written reports, and this evening, Dr. Carpenter, would you like to talk about those, or?
Absolutely. They are there for your review. Feel free to take those in at your convenience, and if there are any questions, we'd be happy to entertain those.
Okay, I do believe that we, oh, I do have, do we need to make a motion first here?
No, there's no motion.
Okay, great, excellent. Uh, so I'm gonna go to Ms. Fritchie.
Hi, just a quick comment. Um, first of all, I want to comment on, um, twelve point zero one, the Aquatic Center Program Evaluation. Um, thanks to, uh, Director Quasi Pryor out there. Um, I found the highlights in the achievement since 2009 in that report, very impressive. Um, I, I actually do have one question, um, and I don't know if anyone here tonight can answer that or not. I noted in that report, sorry, that six of our elementary schools were able to participate in the water safety program last spring, and I was just wondering, do all of the elementary schools, or do all of the schools have that same opportunity? Does anyone know if that's the case?
Well, Quasi is here, you are here. I'm sorry, Quasi.
So, right now, we, uh, we target our title one schools. So, Lee Summit Elementary, Prairie View, um, Westview, Slade, and, um.
Hazel Grove?
Hazel Grove. Those are the, those are the schools that we are targeting at this time. We would like to open the program up to all of the elementary schools after my time in the schedule, because our high school season runs until the middle of February, so we are crunching those in, and we need to speak like from February to the end of May, for when we all want to do it, we can do it.
Well, you and your team do great work. We appreciate that. Thank you.
Very good. Any other comments regarding any of our written presentations? Yes, Mr. Murdock?
I had a question also about the aquatic thing. Um, just because it's near and dear to me, one of the things that was mentioned in the report was some more accessible options for kids. What, what is that looking like? Or like, what are some of the ideas or brainstorming that's going on about that?
So, um, four years ago, we started a program. We titled it Swimming Without Boundaries, and we had, uh, a couple paraplegics participate in the program, where we taught them how to swim. And we, um, would attend the ability exposed that was held out in La Bay, but then moved into Kansas City. Um, our participation numbers fell off, um, but, you know, we're always looking for new avenues to get into, so, um, any idea?
Okay, any other discussion, questions, or comments?
Madam President?
Yes, Ja, yes, Jackie.
I didn't want to step on anybody, but, uh, I want to say in particular congratulations to our Aquatic Center leadership and staff. Uh, you know, having, uh, witnessed swimming, uh, events and diving events in other facilities as well as ours, uh, I think, uh, we have a great reason, uh, to be very thankful and supportive of, of the efforts there. It, it's just, it's an incredible facility and, and something that really shines, uh, in the metro area. And we've got some three great teams, uh, that participate out of that facility, in addition to all the other good work going on there.
Thank you. Jackie? Any other comments? Okay, Kim's pressing the button.
Yeah, sorry, um, but this is just a, a quick comment. I wanted to, um, on twelve point zero two, Destination 2021, the CSET Plan, um, that is a very extensive document that takes a lot of care and attention from our staff in compiling that and evaluating that and documenting the progress on that report. And I just wanted to say thank you for, to the whole CSET team for the work on that, but I think probably especially Katie Collier. It, it probably seems like herding cats sometimes to get all of those. I can't imagine, your job description, but I thank you very much.
Very good. Anyone else? Well, all, congratulations to all three of these, uh, presenters' presentations. They were fantastic. Um, great job, Quasi, great job to our CSET, and, um, our facilities and maintenance has a lot going on. Um, they're, they're quite busy over there in facilities and maintenance, lots going on. Yes, Dennis?
I, I might comment on that part, because every month at finance meeting on Wednesday, we, we, Kyle updates us along with, with Judy and, and now Emily. And kudos to, to that group who works together. Again, I've had the opportunity over the years to, uh, work with some fine people in, in, in that position. However, Kyle and his team just amaze me. And, and, uh, I, the, you know, the, the things like planning ahead to, school starts on August fifteenth, but the summer projects, the best that he's possibly can do is going to be done by August the eighth. And, and there's nothing anymore, well, there are a lot of things that frustrate principals, but one of the things that frustrates principals is, in, in the summer, trying to get their building ready in a, in a two-month period when activities are still going on, and once in a while you have the opportunity to have summer school in your building or something. And so it, uh, it throws around, but, but I, I, kudos to, 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 and, and, and please pass that on, Kyle, which I know you will, to, to the entire classified staff who work in, in, in those arenas throughout the, throughout the summer and the projects, and how you, how you go about the bidding process and, and do those things to get those things done. Thank you.
Alright, any other comments? Alright, again, thank you, um, all of you that worked on these presentations. Uh, at this time, we get to the part where you've heard from the board and their assignments. Now you get to hear from them, maybe in a little bit personal light, as we go through our roundtable discussion. So I'm gonna start with Ms. Julie first.
Alright, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Um, Bob and I went to the annual luncheon for the Lee Summit Economic Development Council, and it was really cool because they had a workforce video there, and we had, we had a, um, let's see, a male nurse, uh, I don't know what high school he was from, but, um, he's, he was in the video, and then we had this really cool female welder, and I think she goes to Lee Summit West, and she'll be a senior, and I can't, Bob, I can't remember the third student that.
Was a, a computer, a computer science student is working an aircraft.
Oh, that, of course, yes. And, um, so the aircraft, um, and it was just really cool, and then I had to give Jeremy a hard time from STA because I'm all into logos and, you know, getting the word out, and it was only STA, and I said, "Jeremy, shouldn't, um, shouldn't the R7 School District be on there?" He goes, "Well, yes, it should." And I guess STA paid for part of the video, and I said, "Well, you can tell them that the board member Julie Doan wanted to have," you know, "I think it should be UCM, R7, and, you know, I just think we should all kind of pitch in, and I know that's money and taxpayer money, but, um, anyway." He goes, "I'll tell him a board member." And I said, "I don't really care, throw my name in there." So, a board member, that was me. So if that comes up, that's totally me. And, um, so I'm gonna harp on this again, uh, because I know we've got some people, new people from great school districts coming in with great ideas, but if you didn't realize, Lee Summit and Lee Summit School District is really a team process. It's teamwork, it's collaboration. So I hope you embrace that, um, that that's how we work around here, and, um, I think that's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Julie. I'm gonna go right next to your next door neighbor there, Mr. Dennis Smith.
I, I also would like, and you have the opportunity to, but welcome the new staff that's, that is, that is with us, and, and, uh, welcome to, to a great school district, and one that I know you will help us even become even better. And, and I, so, again, welcome on that. I, I, I talked back in committee time about the, the TIF issues that, that face us out there, or potentially faces out there. That's something we really need to stay on top of, uh, because, um, we just need to stay on top of that, because it, it could very well affect, uh, some of our finances here in our school district. I, I, I wanna, and I'm not very long, but I'm, I'm old, so I still like a paper, newspaper, and every day I read the, the, the newspaper. I, Amy, I do get it online, too, but I really do like to touch the paper. Uh, so, um, but recently, in the, in the Kansas City Star was, "Can Missouri Schools Keep Teachers by Raising Pay? It's More Complicated Than That." And it was followed up the next day with, "Want Better Schools in Missouri, Hire Higher Quality Teachers and Pay Them Well." And I wanted to add that suddenly, Lee Summit. But, uh, I, the point being is, uh, in, in, in this article ranked us as forty-first, and, and, you know, you can, I don't buy all those rankings all the time. It's kind of like when you talk about where we are worldwide in, in the, in the field of education, and we educate all kids, have that opportunity, not just a select few, some other countries have. But I think we need to, 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 to keep that aware. And, and again, kind of like Julie said, we have a unique situation here with Team Lee Summit. And, and that came about in, in the mid-nineties to Doctor, uh, who, who this building is named after. Uh, and, and it's a collaboration of, of classified and, and certified staff, and I, it's just real important, and is, is ever, and I think it has helped this, because everybody's involved, and I just wanted to, not that I agree with everything in these articles, but, but it, education's out there in the, in the, in the forefront, so. Yeah, I am agreeing with, with Julie, which.
Oh, goodness.
You know, I tried as hard as I could. Okay, thank you, and that's all I have.
Excellent, Dennis and Julie both, thank you. I'm gonna move down here to Mr. Murdock.
Alright, I'll go kind of rapid fire with some things. Um, I wanted to say congratulations to all the schools for summer school success. I actually heard from many parents, um, even within my own neighborhood, about how well it went, at least within our particular school and a couple of others. Um, thank you to, to Technology for helping not only me with some enrollment issues, my gosh, it's me every year, by the way, too, so, sorry about that. I'm just, man. Um, but helping everybody else who's, who, um, presents obviously questions on a pretty routine basis. I think you guys are doing an awesome job with that. Um, it was fun to get to go to the district lunch, um, today with all the different administrators. I will also give a quick plug that I did see Sean Harrell there, who works at MIC, and if people didn't know, by the way, we did graduate together from Raytown South, class of ninety-five. Um, so, I know, we, look at that, man. We really can do it, right? So, um, and then, uh, the last couple of things, um, so, uh, we did take a vacation to Niagara Falls, my family and I, um, and then we also visited the school of baseball, which just means we went to a lot of different baseball games in a lot of different places, um, including Toronto and Detroit and a couple of others. My boys loved the, the old Skydome, and they want to stay at the hotel there, and I told them, "I don't think so." So, um, and then last, but not least, Dr. Carpenter mentioned mac and cheese, right, at the, at the cafeteria. So I just had to just throw this quick plug in that my meal de jour to, you know, if you wanted to say that. And Dr. Hill should know this, too, by the way, because we were at Raytown South together, and I don't know if it was her favorite, but the turkey and mashed potatoes and the hot rolls, because the cafeteria ladies would give us the hot rolls. If you went in there, they would literally pull them right out and give them to, oh, my goodness.
Yep.
So good, so good. So, pretty much everybody up here should have to tell what their favorite meal is, I think, so. Um, there we go, I'm done, thank you.
Very nice. Thank you, Ms. Fritchie.
Okay, so my favorite meal at Lee Summit High School in the late nineteen seventies included those hot yeast rolls that our cafeteria ladies also made from scratch, and we got little smokies with our macaroni and cheese, and it was awesome. Yeah, so, I love that, too. Um, I wanted to say, um, a little bit about robotics camps that have been happening this summer. Uh, last week, my oldest grandson had the opportunity to attend Team Driven Robotics Camp at Lee Summit High School, and he absolutely loved it. Um, we were able to attend the final competition on Friday, and was very impressed by the Lee Summit High School students and former students who really just ran that camp and helped supervise those kids and inspire those kids. Um, each of it, the teams created its own robot that competed on the last day, so I got to look over my grandson's robot, he and his, his partner, and that was really cool. Now, they didn't advance, they didn't win the competition, but they learned a lot, and they had fun, and that's what counts. Um, I would like to thank all three of our high schools who offer robotics camps. If you go online and you check that out, if, if you've not heard of all the, and they have, some of them have variations, like Lego robotics and, um, engineering robotics and all of that. We offer so much and opportunities for our kids in Lee Summit to do that during the summer. So, um, thanks so much to all of those who offer those opportunities. On a little more serious note, um, we had a tragedy happen in Lee Summit in the last couple of weeks, and, um, that affected our school district in that, um, one of our employees, our part-time employee from Lee Summit West High School, uh, was murdered, um, uh, in Kansas City, Kansas, uh, on a transaction with, um, over the internet. Um, his name is Un Samsoneth, um, or Sam, Un Samsoneth, and he is actually a neighbor in my neighborhood, um, but, um, he was known among his folks that he worked with at Lee Summit West. I, I went to the visitation and talked to his wife, Kelly, um, and he was known for his, um, fun sense of humor and playing little jokes on people that he worked with, and they, he was just a bright spot over at Lee Summit West in the cafeteria. Um, he does have five children that they have all gone through Lee Summit School. Some, his youngest are twins who will be going to Campbell this year, um, and, uh, some of his older children go to Lee Summit North. But, um, one thing, when I was visiting with his, uh, wife or widow, Kelly, um, she was very, very appreciative to Dr. Del Sim, uh, for personally visiting, coming to visit the family. Um, and so, um, I just wanted to say that was a great gesture, and it meant a lot to her, and thank you very, very much.
Thank you, Kim, for sharing that. Okay, Mr. Bob White.
I'd like to take this opportunity to welcome our new people, too, and, uh, I've met you all and talked with you a little bit, and I hope to continue that. And by Phyllis's direction, on a personal note, I got a haircut Thursday.
It looks really nice.
Thank you.
I like it, but I always liked it long and slicked back. I thought it looked really cool, so. So, anyway, alrighty, and we are going to now hear from our, uh, our, our missing, but not missing, uh, fellow board member, Jackie, what you got going on there, girl?
Well, the first thing I want to say in regard to the previous, uh, board member who reported, what he failed to do tonight was to report that tomorrow is his birthday, if I'm reading my, uh, information correctly. So, happy birthday, Bob.
Thank you, Jackie.
Uh, I'll let Phyllis lead, uh, the happy birthday there after adjournment. Uh, for the activities I've been engaged with, uh, in the past month since the last board meeting, uh, I really want, want to share that, uh, we've had a very special time, uh, in my family, where we were able to honor, uh, one of my nephews, uh, who is a rising junior at Lee Summit North, that was a Boy Scout Court of Honor in Troop Two-Fifty-One at Lake Watawana. Uh, he's a newly-minted Eagle Scout there, and, and we are just so pleased. at Lake Wadawanna. He's a newly-minted Eagle Scout there, and we are just so pleased with his achievements. And I just want to give a little point of pride here that it's a special thrill to continue the family tradition of Eagle Scouts that have come through the Lee Summit School District. And I was able to take he the next day and his rising seventh grader to Mount Rushmore and Devil Tower and the Custer State Park for a jeep tour the end of June. And it was a great opportunity for learning and for understanding a little bit more about the nation's history and geography and geology. So, I'm surprised they even want to see me anytime soon, but they do. So, then just last week, I was able to join with some of the others who reported at the Pearl Tavern Grand Opening, a special event for our educational foundation. And it's a special treat to be able to interact with the, one of the principals there, the father of Lee Summit High School, Drew Locke, who is the SEC Record Holder there with touchdowns, passes. So, we're looking forward to seeing him in his senior year at Mizzou on the field. And Lee Summit is behind them 100%. And I think someone mentioned earlier that our Lee Summit North Boys Basketball Team helped Hope House out by creating a, or installing a basketball court. And I think it's great to think about the fact that we could have those kids that are in shelter participating. And I'm going to call it Hope House Soup. So, that was really, really a special treat to be able to see that in our community. And I just want to mention that, you know, we're talking about the transition phase that we're going under in our district leadership. And I just want to share with you all something that I've seen here even just, I think, today, that, you know, our values will persist. And these are the kinds of things that are etched in stone. But our culture evolves. And this is the how we do it part of things day to day. And change management has really become a contemporary skill. It's one that we're dealing with constantly. And I think Dr. Carpenter said something about preparing the young people that are coming into our kindergartens this year for their futures when they leave us in 2031 and unimaginable opportunities that they'll have in that particular time. So, you know, that's what we have to do as leaders, is really be in a position to really move forward and create opportunities for these kids, so that we keep in mind that our values are our cornerstone for the district, that our culture is evolving. And I want to also say a special thanks to the great caregivers. I probably really wasn't in a real good position to inquire about who was from Lee Summit that maybe had come through our programs, but the great care that the Lee Summit St. Luke's East Hospital Emergency Room was able to provide me on Friday. And it's really great to have such an asset here in our community. And all of our hospitals are so important to providing care, not only to us, but our students and our staff. So, I want to say a public thanks to them. And with all the talk of ice cream, this person would like to get some ice cream. And that's all I've got.
Well, Ms. Jackie, I'll bet you one of us up here will bring you some ice cream tonight. Okay, very good. Dr. Carpenter?
Yes, Madam President, board members, I'll simply mention a couple of things that are extremely exciting to me. First off, we've learned that Ann Braun, lots of you remember the Teacher of the Year exercise we had this past spring. Well, Ann's been recognized as one of six regional finalists for State Teacher of the Year. So, that is super exciting, recalling that she is one of our esteemed teachers at Woodland Elementary School. So, let's keep thinking about her as she continues to move through this process. We also know that the Kansas City Star is coming in to do some feature work on her. So I'm sure that our Public Relations Department will let you know when that becomes available in the Star. Another piece is the last two days, several of you have mentioned our District Leadership Institute. And I came away from that time today energized. I came away ecstatic about the folks that we get to have working alongside us and leading in our district. I can reflect on multiple presentations, whether it be just the foundational work done by Ms. Ismer and Katie Collier, or whether it be the kicking us off with a fun introduction. And now I know some silly things about all of our leaders that I might not have known before. And that was super fun with Dr. Kephart and Dr. Sharp. Or when we really got focused in on some of the work in Katie Collier and establishing direction and the Student Services folks and really being vulnerable in their leadership and sharing some unique truths that really guide them in their work. I think we're off to a good start. And we've come up with a theme, if you will, for this year. As you've talked about, I think Jackie talked about culture evolving and values that ground us. And some of you talked about collaboration in the Lee Summit way. But here's what I'm going to say to you, is this is about something we've kind of stumbled upon. It's about common ground. It's about common ground. It's about common ground between the old and the new. It's about common ground as it relates to students who may have means and students who may not. And how do we embark upon this work in a manner where we honor multiple perspectives, multiple truths, multiple realities, and still find common ground that's necessary to close those achievement gaps that Kristi Barker so eloquently laid out for us and caused us to really ponder. And the fact that those achievement gaps have persisted. They're not new. They persisted in our organization over time. So how do we start to grapple with that in a way so that we close this gap that I believe, in many cases, has been an opportunity gap? Why do I believe that? Because we're now seeing evidence of what might happen when we close the opportunity gap. You all have done some significant work in terms of heavy lifting and closing opportunity gaps. It will pay dividends for young people. So I came away from the District Leadership Institute super, super energized. And I guess I came in kind of on cloud nine, too, because I had the opportunity last week, if I'm not mixing my days up, maybe it was Friday, to visit what I believe is must-see in terms of a feature that's here in our United States for any caring, competent adult. And that is the Smithsonian Museum of African American History and Culture. So I got a chance to spend about four hours in that space, and I only had an opportunity to visit four of the six floors. And I was fortunate in terms of meeting someone there at the help desk. First question was, how much time do you have, sir? And I told him how much time. And he said, what I encourage you to do is start from the bottom, C3, and work your way up. And by the time you get to C1, and where we are now, and you start to go up into the top three floors, you can kind of do some choosing then. But you must start at C3 and work your way up. Great advice, as it moved us through slavery and through civil rights and through Jim Crow. And then beyond that, in the top level, still significant African American contributions that impact the way we see life and the way we view life here in these United States today. If you're a caring adult in this country at this time, it's probably something that you might want to do. Another thing that was interesting, people from all walks of life, and they're digesting the information and showing up in different ways. You know, I was in my own space of reflection and put my sunglasses on inside because some tears that came from somewhere. But different walks of life, different cultures, taking in the information. Some of our citizens right here, who started out as some of our more recent immigrants, they're thinking and wondering, how did this all happen and why? And some of us who've been here and been a part of it, honoring the accomplishments. And then some reconciliation going on for others. And you just kind of see all of that playing itself out in a space that we all need to visit. So it came away, making me even more steep in my purpose and why I do what I do. Thank you for this opportunity.
Very good. Thank you so much. You have so much passion in life, and we're so grateful to have it here in the R7 District. A couple of things I'd like to say before I send everyone on their way. First off, I'm going to kind of get a little bit personal with you. I took a 13-day RV trip with Tom Reynolds, and we went to Charleston, South Carolina and had an absolute ball. I am a USA all-the-way type of girl. I've traveled Europe. I've been to Italy. I've been all over. And I'm just in love with the United States of America. And we went, just had a great time. Want to brag on a couple of, some of our kids here in Lee Summit in a different way. And I appreciate Kim bringing up the robotics. We have a young man here that attends Lee Summit High School. His name is Joey Ferguson. He's going to be a senior. He was the only high school student in the greater Kansas City area, cast in the touring company of Hairspray. He's a voice student of mine for two years. I've known him since he was a little boy. He is performing at Starlight Theater in Hairspray. If you would like to go see it, it starts Friday night, July 27th. It's quite an honor for this talented community that we all live in to have a young man performing with professionals that are coming from all over the United States. Also, our former Teacher of the Year in Lee Summit, Brad Rackers, is a busy man. He's from Lee Summit West. He's the theater director. He took on all kinds of shows this summer, directed The Cappy Show, and also is currently directing Shrek for Summit Theater Group. And my daughter is choreographing that show. It features many of our adults in this community. And the show has a cast of over 100. I was there subbing for my daughter the other night at her studio, and I walked in and went, whoa, and this cast is on fire. So take your kids, go see it. It's the 9th, 10th, and the 11th. It's out at Lee Summit West. Don't miss it because it's really going to be great. Today, I ran into Mayor Baird. He was pulling up as I was leaving MIC today. As you know, Mayor Baird served on the school board here for three years. And he was so enthusiastic and hearing such good stuff that's going on. And Bob and I visited with him briefly. He just met with Governor Parsons, and the number first thing that was on the agenda was workforce and how great it is to have MIC in our Missouri, state of Missouri. He was talking how he is really advocating, I believe Governor Parsons is going to be visiting soon. But Mayor Baird was enthusiastic about everything that's happening. And he says, he talks to people all over, everything that's happening great in this community ties right back to this district, Lee Summit R7. And so, I guess my message is that to continue pushing and having fun with your jobs and enjoying every minute of it, seize the moment. It's a great day to be R7. And it was so much fun today to see everybody collectively. I felt the leadership love. It was like so much leadership in one roof. So with that said, I'm going to adjourn this meeting. If there's nothing else, here we go. Meeting adjourned.
Happy birthday, Bob White.
Yes, hey to you. Happy birthday to you.